Open the meeting of August 12th at 5:30. Going into executive session to discuss three items under Mass General law chapter 38, section 21a3, to discuss strategy in respect to litigation. If an open meeting may declare a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares that's Mylan versus the town of Dartmouth, the litigation update, and the rejection of the Cannabis Control Commission of the executed host agreement with Apothel for retail marijuana establishment at 747 State Road, Dartmouth. Also to go into conduct collective bargaining session with laborers union with an open session to follow under Mass General law chapter 38, section 21a2, and under Mass General law chapter 38, section 21a2, to the conduct contract negotiations with non-Unit personnel, the interim town administrator, and to approve the executive session minutes of July 22nd. Do I have a motion to move into?
Go ahead.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brooks on the motion. Roll call vote, Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yep.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
And the chair declares so we'll return as close to 6:30 as possible. Thank you.[188.76]
The order of the Select Board meeting of August eighth, twelfth, sorry, eight twelve. Please rise as we salute the flag and please remain standing thereafter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we offer a moment of silence for our service personnel, both here and abroad, and both past and present. Okay, please remain, please have a seat. All right. If it seems like I'm going to rush through the agenda, just to let you know, we have a three-page agenda here, so we're gonna, we're gonna do some yeoman's work tonight.
Take your time.
First item on the agenda, Chuck E. Cheese. We have an alcohol license transfer request. Anybody here for Chuck E.? Here's the mouse here. Come on up.
How are we doing today?
Good, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
All right, the reason for the change is what? Is it, it's a corporation change?
It is, yes.
Okay.
We were just told to just be here, to be honest with you. We were told not to bring nothing, just to be here.
No, no, they're trying to cut down on lawyer's fees, I think that's what it is, basically. So, yeah, okay, I got it, yeah. Okay, so basically, this is a corporate change and one there is a corporation change and it's an alcohol license has to be approved by the board. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks, on the motion. No roll call vote since everybody is present. All of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Easy peasy.
Enjoy your day.
All right, just also to let you know that this meeting is being recorded and will be available on DCTV's on-demand service at any time, however, it is live right now with a slight delay, so watch your language. I gotta do that, too, so.
Hot mic, hot mic.
Next item on the agenda, we have a hearing of Dartmouth Mobile Alcohol License Transferer. Dartmouth Mobile's here. And they spent for an attorney because you can tell by the, by the way they dress.
See his fingers.
Um, I hate to do this to myself, but one of the principals is on his way coming here. He said he'll have five minutes out. I can also answer all the questions for you guys if it's going to be as simple as the first one.
Why the transfer?
Um, my client purchased this, the property and the business from the previous owner, and so it's a transfer of, of license to the new owner.
So, the old owner is, was John Olivera?
John Mills, yeah.
John, yeah, okay.
John Olivera.
Okay, and the new owner will be?
George Reg.
Okay.
So, he's a gas station owner, he's got a bunch, one in Wareham, one in Dayton, they both have both have package store licenses. He's had no incidents. He, the principal, is, is actually on a family vacation in Lebanon right now. He can't come back. So one of his business partners, who is a co-owner of this business, is on his way here from Boston.
Okay.
But, um...
All right. Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks, on the motion. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. You can call him and tell him you can turn around and go. Thank you very much, guys.
Maybe the owner's caught on Slocum mode in the traffic.
Oh, it's three o'clock, okay.
Possible.
It's three o'clock, okay.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have three hearings with EverSource. So I'm going to open up the hearing for Hicksville Road for five poles and three anchors. EverSource.
Good evening.
Oh, hi, Dave.
Jessica Elder representing EverSource. Thank you for having me this evening. So we have actually two on Hicksville Road. Would you like me to kind of put them together or just do them?
No, we have to do the separate hearing on each because each one was published that way.
Uh, so the hearing for, the petition for 1492016176 is for five poles and, and three anchors. Basically, all three of these petitions are for an extremely large project that EverSource is doing, their system reliability projects. We are reconducting approximately 1.7 miles of existing overhead, which is a single-phase. We're switching to a new three-phase conductor. Of course, this project is no expense to the town. This is really for reliability, just on our time to improve the system. This project is to address aging infrastructure running along Hicksville Road and improve tie-in capability, which will improve restoration time during power outages. And this will also, uh, I'm sorry, this is also going to affect about 1,300 customers in the area, in the Dartmouth area. So we definitely, the project is a long, ongoing project. It, we, we have, the, the time I was giving was 2026, that it will be complete. I don't know if it's going to go in sections or if they're going to continuously do it once everything's approved.
All right, sounds good. All right, board members, have any questions on this particular application?
No.
Okay, does anybody in the audience who are in favor of this would like to speak? Anybody in, yes, sir.
Have to get up, sir.
You have to get up. Sir, please get up to the mic, state your name, address, and...
David Gothier, how soon are they going to come back and anchor the poles?
They'll do them as they're going along.
Okay, 'cause pole 21089 is falling over.
Is it? Okay.
And it's pushing against the wires on my house.
Okay.
It's going to pull it right off the house.
You got it. I'm making note of that. 210 over?
21089.
Over 89, okay.
And?
They put the anchor in the ground. They just didn't put the wire on yet.
Okay.
It's moved 14 inches.
Okay, that'll, we'll make sure EverSource gets it taken care of by Friday, correct? Thank you.
And, and sir, sir?
And if, if they don't get it done by Friday, call our office Monday.
Okay.
And I will make sure that they get out there that day.
All right, that was my concern.
Thank you very much for bringing it. I totally appreciate that. Anybody else in favor of this? Anybody against? Okay, I want to close the hearing on this. Board member on the, on the hea, on this particular, um, like, application?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Mickelson, on the motion. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Next hearing, we have the petition to install 32 poles in 15 acres along Hicksville Road. This is the big one.
This is the big one. Thirty-two poles, 15 acres, starting near the Reed Road area. And again, this is a reconductor-ing of existing aging infrastructure that we're gonna restore, update, upgrade, should I say. And that was the 1,300 was included in both of those.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, all these same.
Same location, just different area.
Same location, correct.
Board members have any questions on this? Okay, anybody in the audience have any interest in this, either good or bad? Being none, well, okay, I want to close the hearing. Do I have a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Moving right along. Who says government moves slow? All right, next we have the petition, open the hearing for EverSource to install 17 poles and 15 acres on Rockadundy Road. Okay.
All right, so this is work order 14123769. Again, similar to Hicksville Road, we are reconductor-ing approximately two miles of existing overhead, single-phase conductor with a new three-phase to again, address the aging infrastructure along Rockadundy Road, including capabilities to restore restoration time. 1,500 customers in this area will be affected.
Right.
And again, project finish time about the same.
Board members have any questions on this application?
No.
Oh, wait.
Michelle, the pole number 363-49. I was involved in an accident a while back. Had a pretty good-sized chunk taken out of it. If they could take a look at that. Again, it says okay on the pole, but I think the okay was put there prior to the accident.
Is that included in this?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
363 over 49, you said, correct?
36349, yeah, thank you.
That's just because we don't want double poles in town.
Yeah, we have enough of them.
Is that number imprinted on your car, Mr. O'Neil?
Anyone else have any comments?
Wait.
Yes, sir. That was my next question. Anybody from the audience would like to make any comments? Now you can go.
Okay. Larry Schwartz, 885 Rockadundy Road. And the diagram that we got, it shows putting a pole right on the end of pavement where there's less than a two-foot right of way. And it's right on top of our four-and-a-half-foot historic retaining stone wall. And I, based on this, I don't know how they can do it without damaging the wall. I have pictures if anyone is interested, but this is the wall right across from the walls.
Ooh, okay.
And it looks like, I measured, it's less than a two-foot right of way, and I don't see how they can do that without destroying the wall.
I think, I think making suggestion that the engineers from EverSource who drove this, contact Mr. Schwartz, have a meeting at the property to determine the best location for that. And also to make sure DPW is aware because DPW is in, in control of also the, it's a historic road, and they're also had, the DPW director has to be notified about any kind of work on a historic road, or scenic road, whatever they call it.
And planning board.
And the planning board.
The other question is, since it's part of the historic district, do they have to get involved? I know if you do any construction.
Good question.
They need to approve of that.
That's a good question. We don't generally get involved with the historic district, but we will have one of our co-town administrators contact the Historic Commission, the Russell's Mills Historic District, and ask them that question.
Okay, Roger.
Okay. Let's just look for the pole number.
This is unusual. Generally, people don't speak up at these things. This is great. I love it.
So can you make sure that you get his information?
Yes.
Contact information, phone number, email, whatever.
Yeah, after this, I can get your, get your information.
Anybody else want to make any comments on this?
Larry, you have a card? You have a card? You give a, no?
I haven't had a card for years.
Sounds like you're retired. All right, so, all right, so if we make approval, it's going to be pending any kind of meeting and with, uh, Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz, and also the contact with the DPW Planning Board and the Russell's Mills Historic District. So just whoever makes that motion, make sure that's included in there. Do I have a motion?
Well, you've intimidated me into saying all the right things. Let's see.
Just say you make a motion to approve pending what the chair said.
What he said, I make a motion.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Thank you. All right, all set?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Lot of work to do.
All right, that concludes our hearings. And now, let's see, we have signings, by the way, guys, so you might as well start signing that stuff. All right, first item on the agenda, we have the Peace Police Department Sergeant Promotion, Darren Emond.
Chief, welcome. I'm requesting to fill a sergeant's vacancy to enhance the supervision of the police department. This request for an additional sergeant results from the ever-increasing demands being placed on police officers and our need to provide necessary supervision. Officer Darren Emond is the highest-ranked officer on the current civil service promotional exam for police sergeant. He's been with the department since September 9th, 2013. He voluntarily took on additional duties, working as an assistant use-of-force instructor and field training officer. In addition, he's responsible for maintaining our first-aid kits, AEDs, and fire extinguishers. In 2020, Officer Emond was awarded the department Commendation Medal for effectively dealing with a highly, highly volatile, highly volatile situation involving a suspect with a knife. He also has received two letters of commendation in 2022 and 2023 for outstanding job performance. I recommend that Officer Darren Emond be promoted to police sergeant.
Can we, we shut that door out there or something?
All right, um, let's hear from Officer Emond. Not going to get off easy there, Dan. So you ready for this?
Yes, sir.
Totally?
Yes, sir.
Because once you're in a supervisory role with your fellow officers, it's a, it's a bigger responsibility.
Absolutely.
And I see your families here, so I'm sure, I, let me ask this question. Are you guys ready for this?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Board, pleasure?
Absolutely.
Is that a? Motion?
That's a motion, absolutely.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? All right, the only thing is, good luck.
Be safe.
Be safe, and supervise wisely.
Sir.
And keep up the good work.
Important things, supervise wisely.
And assure the area to have three commendations. That's fabulous.
Yes, and fairly.
Congratulations.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Sergeant Emond.
It's a pleasure.
Were you considered?
And just before our line of blue disappears here, off into the sunset, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Officer Hilchi on his newborn.
Oh.
Part of my stuff.
Now I feel a little...
Okay. All right, chief, next item, we have a request for the sheriff's department looking to have officers on their department become traffic control officers for their particular facilities, correct?
Yes, sir. The sheriff had reached out to me about a month ago regarding a parking issue he's encountering on their facility, House of Correction on Florence Corner Road. People parking in handicap, fileines and so forth, and requested the ability to issue parking tickets to the violators. He provided me with a, a list of nine employees of the sheriff's department that he would like appointed as parking control officers in order to be able to issue those parking tickets.
Okay, so the sher, it's only going to be for his facilities, correct? And not throughout the town?
Yeah, so technically, there's no limitation on it, but that's the understanding that we have, that it would be on his facilities, correct? And obviously, if there's any issues that come up, I mean, that could be revoked by the board, and they could no longer be the parking control officers.
Yeah, I can understand the request, however, they do have facility people, personnel there, and if somebody's parking in a handicap spot, they can immediately call a tow truck and have it towed. Because, to be honest with you, a $25 or $50 parking ticket or $100 parking ticket is a hell of a lot easier than $150 tow, you know? I mean, they do have tow companies that will do it. South Coast Towing is one of them, you know? I don't, any agreement that the sheriff would have, I would maintain it, that would only be on his, um, property that is under the county control.
Sure, and I can, I'll have that discussion with him. I don't think it'll be an issue. That's what he requested initially, is just on his property. I don't think he's looking to have the sheriffs go around town and issue in parking tickets, so I will, I will relay that to him.
Yeah, I wouldn't want them to do that.
You don't, you don't think it's an overreach?
Uh, on their own property, I, I have no issue.
Well, on their facility, it's fine.
Yeah.
But that's it.
Yeah.
But I do remember a while back that there was a few incidents in New Bedford, that the sheriffs, uh, sheriffs, uh, marked cars were involved in some kind of issues.
With this?
I don't, I don't want to see that.
No, I, I agree. With Sheriff Ro, he's been very focused on, on the care and custody of prisoners, and is not interested in having any kind of law enforcement function in town. He's just looking to take care of his own facility.
Okay. Um, is there going to be any kind of a written, um, agreement or a written letter to this? Because what I would like to make sure, because generally, if somebody, if somebody is going to dispute the ticket, it's going to come to our parking control officer, and the parking control officer has to have information. So they would have to, that's you, okay. So he would have to have information of the incident along with any kind of pitches or anything like that. So I want to make sure that if they do get a ticket, that there's some backup information for the parking control officer in case there is a dispute.
Sure, and I, and I had that conversation upfront with the sheriff about that, that we have found pitches to be very valuable with the violations, and he didn't have any issues with that, and I'll stress that again in my conversation with him.
Okay, board's pleasure.
Have a question.
One more thing. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dave.
All right, Mr. Tattlebaum, then Mrs. Brooks.
It, it seems, is nine people authorized, necessary for this handful of parking spaces? Nine authorized people?
I think what you tried to do is provide a list of, to ensure someone would be on the facility when the violation...
But generally, you give out a couple of tickets, and the people get the word that they don't park there anymore. But if you think to have coverage 24/7, you think nine people, but I think, I certainly agree with Mrs. McDonald that it has to be limited in writing to their, to their location only.
Mrs. Brooks?
Did no one else find the humor in the fact that the folks that are working at, for the sheriff's department are parking in the wrong places, and they need nine people to be authorized to write tickets?
I'm almost, I'm almost willing to bet that it is not the employees, as they, they have a designated parking area, that it's the visitors who come to the prison to visit the fam, um, their family members who are incarcerated. That's, I'm almost willing, dollars to donuts, that's exactly what's going on.
I just found it. Interesting. Just saying.
Towing a car is always much more. It costs a lot more, let's put it that way.
An inconvenience as well.
At the risk of spending too much time on this issue, I'd like to vote.
Yeah, well, I'm just waiting for Mrs. Brooks, so I, I'm waiting for a motion.
Oh, I thought we had one.
You're going to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Mickelson, and seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum. On the motion, any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, just as a quick question, if Officer Emond's, Sergeant Emond's family would like to leave and go celebrate, I won't be offended, trust me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the broadband committee resignation of Sarah Lamont. People are dropping from this committee left and right. I mean, come on.
And it's an important committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Well...
But I understand her reason why, is because she's now, um...
Wasted time.
She's now in an area of her employer, which there could be a, a significant conflict.
That's right.
So, um, so I need a motion to...
Motion to accept the resignation of Sarah Lamont.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None unanimous. Please send her a letter thanking her, and please get this position posted ASAP. Uh, let's see.
Wait, EverSource?
Barber, EverSource, Slocum Road Gas Line Replacement Status Update. As we have all known, we've got social media outcry as to why the heck are they doing it now? And what's going to happen? Because Slocum Road was just recently done, so I'm sure you're going to tell us that EverSource is going to do, replace the road curb to curb and make it nice, nice again before school.
So, Mr. Anthony Velou from EverSource can answer the question?
Yes, I know Anthony.
Of why?
Of why?
Yes.
Yep, so, Mr. Chairman, board members, so we had a significant amount of leaks on Slocom and Longwood, so the, we want to do this project next year, but because of the significant amount of leaks, we moved it up into this summer. So we did this, this project is from Slocom to Metropolitan, and now we're on Longwood, so we're off Slocom, I think, as of today. We'll come back next summer to do the rest of Slocom up to State Road. So we're out of, we were told, we met with Tim, the police, we had to be out of there before school started.
After June 20th, June 21st, something like that.
Well, this came up last, this was sort of like a last-minute schedule change?
Standable.
Yeah, but for next year, yeah, after school and before school starts.
I'd much rather have you guys take care of the problems because of leaks...
Right.
Than having something explode.
Gotcha, yep.
And my understanding is because of the moratorium, the curb cuts on Slocom are going to be curb-to-curb, the replacement asphalt.
Moratorium Road, yep.
Thank you, terrific.
So for next year, and we can still work out the details with Tim, we want to continue down Patton, Truman, Nimitz, Doolittle, Marshall, all those side streets off of Slocom, to put a brand-new main in that whole neighborhood.
That's good. Yeah, I mean, that's off Slocom, so that's, you know, passing by is not going to create, you know, long lines on Brownell Avenue like it did the first couple of days.
Right.
Okay. Board members have any questions on this, Mr. Tattlebaum?
I would just like to satisfy, of course, I've been asked, and the safety office is not here, but maybe, Tim, you can answer it, but was there any way we could do one way for two minutes and then the other way for two minutes, rather than have the detour? Is that just wasn't possible? It may not be purview, but is it?
Yeah, so the issue with changing traffic to heading northbound is backups to Route 6 onto the state highway, so that would create some problems. So that's why we chose one way south and then detour north.
Good, thank you, Sid.
You're welcome. And also, as far as the road reconstruction goes, so Eversource will maintain their trench until they finish the next phase next year, and once, you know, once that trench settles, we'll reconstruct the entire length from Patton Street to Route 6, so.
Thank you for the... Anyone else? Mr. O'Neil?
So, so Slocom Road's going to be left that way for the year until we start to get into the side roads. That part of the project will be completed, and then we're going to come back and do what?
Then they're going to come back, and they're going to extend from Middlesex Ave to Route 6, or Longwood. Did you finish at Longwood or Middlesex?
I think Sean's, Shane started Longwood today.
Okay. So Longwood to Route 6, they'll start next year after school's out, and then, once that's all complete, we'll reconstruct all of Slocom Road in one phase, but the trench work will remain and they'll maintain it.
What does "we" mean? So the finish will be done all at once?
So, it'll be funded, it's funded through the Eversource work for the reconstruction of the road, and we will bid the project to our vendor and inspect it and supervise it.
Most of the complaints that I've gotten, on the gas lines anyway, and I understand the reason that you can't use the flow fill at this point, but hopefully, there's some research being done about the types of materials that they can pack into those trenches, and I understand some of the issues behind it, but Allen Street, how long are we going to be dealing with that trench on Allen Street? You know, are we going to wait a year and then tie both projects together and refinish? Are we leaving it like that?
Nope, Allen Street is planned to be milled this week.
On the list, yeah.
All right, and then we'll pave it, we'll pave sometime next week.
All right, all the way down, from the cemetery, all the way down to Allendale?
Yeah, it's a Sable, yes.
Sable Avenue, yeah, okay, thanks, Tim.
You're welcome. Anybody have anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and trust me, Anthony, if we have any questions, we know who to contact.
Oh, yeah, and the polls, we'll look into those definitely by this week.
Great, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, we have the election warrant approval.
Good evening. So we have our third election of the year coming up on September 3rd, with the day after Labor Day. It will be our state primary, so in your packet today, you had the election warrant that I'm hoping to have approved and signed so that it can be posted.
All right. Members have any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion made to approve the election warrant.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks to approve the election warrant for September 2024, state primary. Seconded by Ms. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, none unanimous. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
While we're on the election, I just want to make a pledge or a plug one more time that people who received their postcard in the mail, which when they open up, has all kinds of choices, can turn this in and vote by mail for the September election and the November election.
They can, they should have, those have been out for quite some time, and they should be getting them in, because everybody who has requested between January 1st and today has been mailed their ballot already, so we've sent out about 5,200 ballots.
I've already gotten my ballot.
So what's the date?
Oh, sorry.
The date of what? The election?
No, the last day you can get these mailed in.
Five days prior to the election.
It is, it's, yeah.
Mailing them, so we're talking about a couple things, the postcard, the date is on their deadline.
My sixth.
The date for me to receive your ballot is by 8:00 PM on September 3rd. We cannot accept them after that, there is no time, it can't be put in the mail, I must have it in hand. Ballots can be dropped off in the town clerk's office, in the silver box outside, in the box outside of the town clerk's office. Postage is paid, we recommend you send it to United States Postal Service. You can walk into the town clerk's office and hand it to them. You may not bring it to your polling location and give it to your poll worker on the day of, and that frequently happens. It cannot be, it's illegal to be accepted that way. And if you'll indulge me, I do want to make sure people know that early voting begins on Saturday, August 24th, here, from 9:00 to 3:00, and it will continue the 26th to the 30th, from 8:30 to 4:30 here at Town Hall. So people have many ways in which they can vote. There's also absentee if people were not going to be available on the day of the election.
Okay, terrific.
You already have 5,000 voters who are going to vote by mail?
We have sent out five, more than 5,000 ballots, correct.
So, most of those people will vote? And what percentage of that, of the total, is it?
So we haven't had this experience before, because this is a relatively new law. Unfortunately, it's far lower than you would expect.
What?
Lower.
The amount of people...
The percentage that we receive back is far less than you would anticipate.
So they meant, those people wouldn't vote at all?
Not necessarily, so the beauty of voting by mail is you can get that ballot, and if you decide you don't want to vote by mail, you can spoil that and you can vote in person. Whatever ballot we receive first and accept into our system is how you will vote.
But you can't bring in the mail-in ballot into the...
Polling place, no, because there's a checks and balances, we're checking those in within the state system to ensure that people are only getting their one vote. I know there's lots of worries, but the state has definitely perfected the system, so that's why you may not hand it to a poll worker. You would, even on Election Day, still need to bring it over to the town clerk's office.
So you stand by the security of the process that...
I do, because we're working many, many nights and hours. I will say that I had lots of town employees helping me, Alda Green, Alda Reposo, Kelly Thompson, Sue Gonzev, Michelle Viera, Magnoli McComish, all helping me to get my ballots out, staying till 7:00, 8:00 at night so that we're getting people their ballots out quickly, but there are a lot of checks and balances, so that's why, even with that postcard, when Mrs. Brooks is talking about filling it out correctly, it's imperative that people read the instructions, because I can only by law do what it is that's being requested, so for these primaries, if you are an unenrolled voter, or what people call independent, you must pick a ballot, and that frequently, we're seeing people not pick which ballot they'd like, and they're getting no ballot. So we hope that people can really, it's very, very clear, the way that the state has put that postcard out. If you don't return your postcard in September, you can expect that the state is going to send you another postcard to give you the opportunity to request for November, but there are three ballot types that will be on our website, Democrat, Republican, God bless you, bless you again, and Libertarian.
Thank you for making our elections as honest as they are.
We're working really, really hard at it.
Oh, you are. Thank you.
Does state write on the card what party you have...
But if you're unenrolled, your card is going to look slightly different in which you're going to pick. So if you're enrolled as a Democrat, your card is going to say that that's what you're getting. If you're unenrolled, you're going to have a choice of three boxes, Democrat, Republican, Libertarian. Independent is not a choice. I know that people think they're independent, that's really unenrolled, and that just gives you the option of which ballot you would like. This will not be an issue in November, November is one ballot, and all of the parties will be on it. This is also a state election, so we're voting for, it's a primary, so we're voting for offices like our county commissioner, our state legislature, and so those are the offices that you can expect to see on that ballot, so it's a little bit different. People, I think, might be a little confused because there's so much excitement and anticipation of November, but we still have another election prior to that we're focused on.
I'm going to give you one more chance to tell us, if I receive this, and I want to vote in the September election for a party that is not that I'm registered for, tell me how I go about changing my party prior to the day of that election.
So you're not going to write it on your postcard and send me a little note, because I can't change it that way. So if you got a card and it says that you are registered Democrat, that's the ballot you're getting. If you think you want a different one, you're going to need to come to the town clerk's office, or go to the Secretary of the Commonwealth's website, and you're going to need to re-register to vote and change your party, and you must do that prior to 5:00 PM on Saturday, August 24th, because that's the last day for us to register to vote or make changes to our current voter registration.
Are there any questions, or any possibilities that I haven't asked you about tonight?
So there are always questions that I can't come up with.
Cover them all with all my samples, I know.
Our residents are amazing at helping me to find all of the flaws in our system, but it seems overall that people are working really hard to get themselves in a position where they can make some really good decisions. Again, we're very focused on this state primary that's coming up, I know people are excited for November, and there'll be lots of information coming out closer to that date as far as new postcards, there will be the books with the red cover that will give people information about the questions in November and all of that, and not that that's not important, but our focus and our energy right now is making sure that we have a really successful September state primary.
Great work.
You did a good work. Thank you, Sarah.
You're a good judge.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have the Greater New Bedford Refuge Management District Operations Update. Okay, Gary?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Both Chris and I had the opportunity to visit the facility. John and Anthony gave us a nice tour of the facility, they have quite an operation down there, and make as much use as they can of the space that they had, and we had kind of asked them to come back in and just give us an update on...
My name's John Borogad, I am the chairman of the board. I wanted to introduce Chris LeBlanc, she is one of the Dartmouth representatives. Chris, her experience as an environmental engineer is unbelievable, she has such a wealth of knowledge, as the chairman is acknowledging. Our other member is Mike Gagne, who brings the town administration side in, and we've recently, about a year and a half ago, now had a change, Scott Alfons has stepped back, he is now a part-time employee, kind of dealing on strategic projects, and we have, Anthony Novelli is our new executive administrator. I know I'm going to embarrass him, but I say, we literally found the needle in the haystack with Anthony, he has been phenomenal for us. And the one thing with the Refuge District, if you look back over time, we've been very fortunate to have great administrators, not president, not chairman, administrators, and I think Anthony is continuing in that, because he has just done, where he, how fast he's come along is just unbelievable, so. I know the question that we always have is, how long, and what are you going to do? So, I'm going to turn it over to Anthony, we're going to try to answer those questions, and then anything else, and actually, I'm very glad that Chris and Gary did come out for a tour, where actually, you know, anytime anybody, I know it's, you know, it's a landfill, nobody, but it's actually, it's actually pretty interesting, isn't it? So, anytime anybody wants the tour, just let us know, we'll be happy to do that, so.
Thank you, John. Good evening, everybody. I did prepare a short little PowerPoint. I think we sound interesting as waste nerds, and we say the landfill is cool, but I would second that. I'd also voice, as you spoke about committee members earlier, that the town of Dartmouth has some great representation on the board, between John, Christine, and Mike Gagne, is a very good representation. So, just where we're at, I took a look at since Crepe Hill landfill opened in 1995, and I did just a quick comparison of what the town of Dartmouth has paid for waste disposal compared to basically what we charge other customers, and these are just some rough estimates, but it's probably over $11 million in that time, and just for this past year, we probably saved about $500,000 just from the amount of waste here of, you know, we delivered about 5,700 tons, that was the annual assessment. There's multiple benefits of this assessment, you know upfront, before the fiscal year starts, how much you're going to get charged for the whole year, it doesn't vary significantly based on the amount of waste delivered, it's based on a percentage of the total wastes delivered by Dartmouth and by the town of New Bedford, so very reasonable waste disposal rates, and we're trying to keep this benefit going as long as possible. We stress that this landfill is an asset, I know no one wants to really think or do about trash, but it's a very well-run, modern facility, so it's a fully-lined landfill, there's liners under all the cells, there's H.A. collection, we have a landfill gas-energy facility on site that's collecting all the methane gas that's created by the landfill, and creating renewable energy that's being fed to the grid. It's, you know, roughly powering about 1,700 homes in the area just from gas that's produced from trash, so pretty cool system, if you ask me. We also have a lot of advanced technology on the site to try and maximize the gas that we're collecting, because for one, that's for revenue, but we're also doing our best to minimize methane emissions for obvious reasons, so there's a company called Low Side Controls where they have automated products mounted to our gas well fields, they can help sense the temperature, pressure, the composition of the gas, what percentage of methane, and we have this virtual dashboard that monitors the whole landfill and helps us really maximize our gas collection. It's pretty cool stuff. So, in the currently constructed, permitted, and built landfill cells, we have about five years of airspace capacity remaining. This is based on the available cubic yards of volume in the landfill, once it's full-sized, compared to the rate at which we're filling that landfill. So, at the current rates, it's about five years, we're probably dipping a little bit under there. We have worked really hard to extend this, I think we were saying five years a year or two ago, and the reason for that is because we have significantly reduced the amount of waste coming from non-member entities, out from the town of Dartmouth and the city of New Bedford, we deal with commercial haulers. We've really tried to hone in on what's the minimum waste that we can take in to fund our operation and fund our future projects without consuming excess airspace from Dartmouth and Bedford for future use. So, that coupled with a really, a strong outreach in waste reduction, recycling education, we work frequently with the Department of Public Works on trying to maximize recycling programs, waste diversion, trying to promote composting. I will say that when Dartmouth implemented the pay-as-you-throw program, you had about a 40% reduction in municipal solid waste coming to the landfill, very significant, very effective, so I think we're doing a good job on that front, the transfer station's a popular place, and I think it's a well-run operation there, so. These are efforts to maximize the life of the landfill as it is now, and we are also working on designing a new landfill cell that we believe we can build and construct within the existing site assignment footprint, so this would not require any major permit modifications, we're not going outside the site assignment boundaries, we're not exceeding any permits that we currently have. It would be roughly five years of capacity once we do it, so we're looking at about 10 years in total, once that's designed, built, and permitted for landfill capacity.
Let me just, when Crepe Hill first came aboard, what was the initial lifespan date?
The initial projection was for it to be a 20-year landfill, and that was in 1995, so that would have been 2015, and so we've extended it till now, and we were thinking we can get another 10 years out of it, so.
So because of the pay as you throw program, and the reduction through recycling, the town of Dartmouth and the city of New Bedford have extended the landfill eight years beyond its original life expectancy.
Already, with room for more, yeah. I would say there's a lot of factors, I think, you know, doing a lot of waste diversion is a key part of it, we try not to take materials that have better uses, things that can be recycled, reused, composting, we're really stressing that those should not go to the landfill. We're really stressing that those should not go to the landfill. This is a benefit that we're trying to extend, but it really should just be reserved for items that can't have a better option to be disposed of.
You also stated that Dartmouth had their reduction in trash of 40%. What was New Bedford's reduction? Do you know that offhand?
New Bedford does not have a Pay As You Throw program, so at that time, there was not...
They do have a recycling program.
They do have a curbside recycling program, yes, but at the time Dartmouth adopted it, there was not a significant reduction from New Bedford, so see it as an effective model.
So New Bedford needs to work on it a little bit harder.
I agree, yeah. It's not an easy thing to do, as I'm sure you're all aware, but from the solid waste side is a way to achieve meaningful reduction in waste volumes. So, are there any questions there? So obviously, a question comes up is what's next after the 10 years? Judging by a lot of trends in Massachusetts and by some strategic planning that we've done with consultants, there's not a lot of disposal facilities left in Massachusetts, and that's a pretty common trend. If you look at data published by the Department of Environmental Protection, Massachusetts is already exporting almost half of the waste generated in the state to other states, to landfills and waste energy facilities across state lines. There's not a lot of places around here that want it. We are actively declining waste from other communities, and in a similar fashion, once this is closed, there's not a lot of places that can go with it. So that leads to the logistics of waste by rail. Railroad is the most cost-effective way to transport waste long distances, and it ends up in facilities in various parts of the country operated by, you know, large waste companies. So this is going to get very expensive, and this is another main reason we're trying to extend the life of the landfill is, as you saw, you know, right now, we don't charge you per ton, but it's about $25 a ton for waste, and there's a rail transfer station in New Bedford already charging $190 a ton for residents to jump off waste. So, you know, 5,700 tons is not a massive amount of waste, but it's still going to add up pretty quickly when you take all those things into consideration. I think that's just of it. I'll open up to any questions.
Board members have any questions? Mr. Tattelbaum?
How much, this may be an unfair question, but how much can we hope to expect from some kind of research and technology that may change how we are able to process this waste going forward?
Yeah, I actively look for technologies that are, you know, have a better system than landfills or waste energy facilities that, you know, from what I've found, there's nothing that's been proven to do it in a better manner, to be more, you know, in a sustainable way. I think there's a gap that technology needs to fill. You're asking for, you know, there's not a specific technology that I've found that's exceeded it.
Is it much around the world, or not really?
There's, you know, for some streams of waste, there's different technologies, but for handling a mixed municipal solid waste load, I haven't seen anything that can take the whole mixed, you know, mixed bag and process it in an effective way.
I just wanted to share one thing, because you may read about it in the paper. I know it was in the Fall River Herald. When E.L. Harvey took over for ABC, they canceled their contract with us. They're bringing their waste to other facilities. That was a pretty big hit for us. So what we did was we went out for auction and put it up that we would auction off X amount of tons, of tonnage. The city of Fall River bid on it, and they won. Okay, so we will now actually, probably as of October?
Probably, yeah, September.
Okay. We will be taking waste in from the city of Fall River, okay? We are limiting it, and we, so there's very strict regulations on what we will take from them, but at the end of the day, it was a business decision. We still need to fund for that new cell. We have post-closure things that we need to do. It was pure and simple. It was a business decision. I know sometimes, you know, people in Fall River, "Fall River, we can't, you know, we can't do business with Fall River." It was done. As Anthony mentioned, we've actually cut back about 40% of what's going into the landfill, so that is not in addition to it. We're still cut back 40%, but this is actually just to replace the revenue that we lost from E.L. Harvey. And if, as Anthony said, we're paying $25 a ton to get rid of our waste. Fall River's contract was 116 a ton, so.
So that was going to be my second part question. I know there's two new companies, the Nationals. So you were faced with a decision. You needed X amount of income to pay bills, but you also wanted to minimize as much as you could to extend the life of the landfill.
Exactly, exactly, right.
And Fall River's logical because it's close by for them, too.
Yeah, it was actually, from what I've seen and read, they were, they're thrilled. They were very happy with the deal. And that is the going rate for commercial haulers. It wasn't like we, you know, stuck it to Fall River. I don't want you to, that's the going rate. So that's as, that $25 is as good as, it is as good as it seems for New Bedford and for Dartmouth. 25 bucks.
I had one more.
Sorry. I understand that New Bedford, we have limited capabilities, but it seems like that their inability to properly recycle is putting more in the landfill than they have to. Yes?
Yeah, I'd say yes or no. They do have readily accessible recycling to all the residents. There's weekly curbside pickup collections and a nice six-gallon cart, and we do do a lot with, you know, recycling education outreach in there.
In theory, it's in their best interest to tighten the recycle program, but they're really not doing it. But in the long run, it will affect their ability on this landfill because we're going to run out of space. So it is in our best interest to town to try to maybe be a team player, maybe being naive here, to work with the town. We have other issues with the city of New Bedford as well, and we could put them together and sit down and actually talk about the reality. If they don't do something better, we're all both going to be in trouble because they're going to run out of that landfill. Maybe we get another five years on top of that. I'm just, maybe it's naive, but... Is that fair?
No, that's fair. I mean, I think the Pay As You Throw program was a great testament of what can be achieved waste reduction. I will also point out that one of the reasons that the town's cost is so low is because we have these deals with these commercial haulers that, you know, generate a lot more income, so we're always talking about, you know, what's the sweet spot? How much, how can we, how much can we reduce it while still keeping the town's costs very low? So we don't want to hear that, but if there was, you know, increased assessments gradually, we could cut out commercial waste, and that's another way to extend the life, too. So I think working with the city on waste reduction efforts and encouraging Pay As You Throw is worthwhile.
We contribute 5,700 pounds, tons, the city of New Bedford, how much is, 20?
So of the member communities, Dartmouth does about 15%, and New Bedford's about 85%. So that comes out in the assessment. That number that you saw was 15% of the total assessment, and that's how it's calculated.
Mr. O'Neill?
Mr. Chairman, Anthony, I did have a chance to talk with John about this in detail a while back, and the fact that we have the ability to potentially add to this, this area with an additional cell is great for the town of Dartmouth. The one question that I always have for you is, what do you need from us? You know, we know that you're going through the Mast EP and EPA application process, and, you know, if you can just touch on exactly where we are in that process, if you're running into any difficulty. But one of the things that we thought of requesting from Buzzards Bay Coalition, DNRT, is to be prepared. Be prepared with a list of acreage that we've been able to protect in this area, in the town, and also projects that we've backed for protection to help with your application process if need be, just to show the federal government that we're trying to be good stewards. So the question, I guess, would be, what do you need from us, if anything, right now through your application process to secure the additional cell?
At this time, I don't, I don't know if there's anything. We did have, engaged the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health to just start talking about the project, any concerns they might have, get some input. The new cell may involve minor impacts to wetland buffer zones, which would apply Conservation Commission approval, and it may go to that down the road, but we're not quite there yet. So at this point, we need to finalize the designs for the new cell and get it through the Department of Environmental Protection, and then it would come back to the town, and at that point, we could probably engage.
And we can't advocate on both the state and federal level for you also as a town because this is paramount. This is big.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you, John.
Good evening.
Next item on the agenda, we have a request from Fire District One for the use of the fuel trucks. My understanding is that agreement has already been made between the DPW and Fire District One, if I'm not mistaken?
For the fuel.
For the fuel?
We have someone here.
And it is in writing, correct? Okay, thank you.
So what did we, what are they paying for the fuel?
I'm not sure.
It would be whatever department, whatever the fuel price is as of that day.
So all departments get billed on what they use for the set price that we pay, so there's, you know.
On the way in?
So it's always a moving target.
Well, the cash correspondence that we did receive was from Paul Pacheco and representative from the Fire District saying that they would, initially, we were going to invoice the district, but the agreement was reached to go ahead and supply them with fuel. I believe it's only on a temporary basis.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
While they reconstruct, yeah.
Okay.
The same rate as being charged to the other departments.
You know how much fuel they actually need per month or per week? Do we have any of those numbers?
I'm not sure on the apparatus that they're fueling. I guess it's based on per call, if they're using it more than some other times. It's all dependent on that, but we can probably check on an average and get back.
District Two and District Three have their own tanks.
Right, they have their own access.
Yep.
Yeah, but District One is, the fire station's being worked on, so they're not going to have access. Okay, thank you. All right, so next item is the Peyton Airham Heritage Trail kiosk location request.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Langhauser. I'm with the Pathways Committee, here tonight to seek your approval to relocate the Peyton Airham Heritage Trail kiosk, which was located right next to the fire station in District One on Cleveland Street. Apparently, it was taken down pending renovations of the building. We're looking for a new home for it. We are proposing that we'd like to put it outside the Maritime Center at the corner of Bridge Street and Water Street. All the Digsafe parties have cleared it, including DPW, for water and sewer, so this is the last stop to move this project forward.
I think it's a more appropriate place.
Totally. I couldn't agree with you more.
Okay, do I have a motion from the board to approve the relocation?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Brooks on the motion. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed on your names.
Easy.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the Collins Center contract for the town administrative search.
Mr. Chairman, we have Melanie Perry tonight from the...
Our most capable, our most capable person in handling this stuff.
Search and where it's going.
Hi, Melanie.
So at a previous meeting, the board had chose to hire the Collins Center to help with the town administrator recruitment, and before you is their proposed contract. It has been reviewed by town council, and we made some adjustments based on his comments, which a lot of it was added at the end there, under communication. So if you guys would approve, we can get it started.
Okay, so they're looking at, the timeline is approximately four months. So month one would be the development and approval of the profile, placement of the advertisement, beginning recruitment, recruitment, networking, and outreach, which could be done in less than a month. Month two is the recruitment, networking, and outreach. Meet with the screening committee to establish the process, set the dates, determine the questions, compile the resumes, and distribute the resumes to the screening committee. Meet with the screening committee members to determine which candidates to interview. The third month, which that could also be shortened also. The interview of the candidates for preliminary interviews with the screening committee, perform reference and background checks, and then finally, the finalists announced and interviewed by the select board. So the contracts that I have, are these the ones that is, excuse me, sounds like a moron. Is this the contract that was looked at by Anthony with all...
Yes, and that's the updated version.
Okay, all right.
We just got that today.
Yes.
The corrections today, yeah.
Correct.
Right. All right, board's pleasure.
Motion to approve the contract.
All right, is there a second?
14,000, is that what it is?
14,000.
And that won't be paid to them until the services are completed, and we've hired somebody, so.
All right, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Ms. O'Neill. On the motion, any questions?
Question.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
I know we talked about this once before, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I am, once again, very concerned that if the pool is inadequate, I think it should be addressed at contract time as opposed to when they come in to talk to us, is what is their strategy if the pool is inadequate?
Well, I have a feeling that that would be part of the discussion once we get the resumes to see what's going on, and that'll be part of the...
My point of view is I'd like to know what their strategy is before it comes up as opposed to if, and if, and when it comes up.
One of their first things that they're going to do is they're going to schedule individual interviews with the board members, so you can ask any questions to them then.
And when will that happen?
They want to schedule them within the next couple of weeks.
Good.
They know that this is a fast-track thing for the board, and they want to get to it as soon as possible.
You've spoken to them, obviously.
Yes.
Are you satisfied that that will be the process that would satisfy? I think it's particularly important because I'm concerned about the pool of, potential pool.
Yes.
That'll do the trick if we do it on these individual, if we all agree that it's important that they will make it part of their strategy?
Yes, I believe so.
You're, okay.
Great. Thanks, Melanie.
They've done this before, so I'm sure they've also run into a problem where, you know, the initial round, the first round of candidates wasn't that...
I agree, and I'm hopeful that it's not the case, but I think that before we start going, so we're going to talk to them before they start each individual for them.
Yes, and I did have a conversation with them today relating to if the candidate were to quit within a year, they would do the whole search all over again without charging us a fee.
All right, anybody else on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? All right.
Hope to see them in two weeks.
We'll see them quicker than that.
Will that be in person?
Yes.
They had requested emails for everybody, right?
Yeah, as soon as the contract is approved, as early as tomorrow, I'll send them everybody's information, and they'll reach out and schedule something with you guys.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the screening committee makeup. Now, the Collins Center has suggested that no select person be on the committee, which I wholeheartedly agree. So this will be coming from community, the screening committee made up of the community. They also suggest that no town employees or department heads also be on it because potential...
Conflict.
Conflicts, which I totally agree. So I would like to set, I would like to start advertising for the screening committee made up of five members, of community members.
And they have to be community members?
They have to live in Dartmouth. They, no ifs, ands, or buts about it, they got to live in Dartmouth. And I was even thinking about they would have to be registered voters, but I would rather just remove that because they live in town, they pay in town, taxpayers, I think that should be more than enough. And then we can take a look at the pool of candidates and then select the people that we want on the screening committee.
I think that it's important when we send this out that we be as specific as possible, the time it's going to take, the perspective it's going to need, as much as we can put in upfront, because this is a major commitment.
Well, we can put the timeline in, and we can let them know it's going to take up to, it's going to take up to four months. to, it's going to take up to four months.
And also, if they, as Collin says, they, the people they don't want, I think it's worth mentioning to these members is that you're going to be representing the community and there will need be no select board members. They have to understand, in my mind, how important this is and what their job is. Because I, I think it's a great idea, but I think as much as we can put in that, that letter out to the.
Yeah, so I, I can come up with a very detailed charge, I can send it to the board beforehand if you guys would like.
Okay.
I will, Melanie will look, Melanie and I will work on it and then we'll send it out to the board for a quick review. And then if you do, just do a quick reply to me only.
Right.
Nobody else.
But if there's any disagreement here, I'd like to hear it now because I'm, in terms of how, this would be a broad.
Well, we have to see what, we have to see what we're looking at first before there's any kind of a disagreement. So let's, let's get the first, let's get the first.
Talking about disagreeing about the concept itself, as opposed to the usual, you know, sending out a little note that we need to look at.
Well, I think I'd, I'd like to ask that in the, while casting the net, that we ask the interested people to include boards or committees or their connection to work in the town, because I think it would be nice to have a variety of, of perspectives.
Okay.
Longevity in the town, new to the town.
What's the number they think they want?
Five.
Five people I think is sufficient. I think more than that, then it becomes crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we'll send up the first one, send it to me, we'll take a look at it and then we'll go from there.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have the, let's see, let me get to it.
Laborers.
Oh, man, this is all. Yep, we have the Laborers International Union Sign Agreement Letter. Gary, you want to present that?
So as the board had suggested that Chris and I look at the, the vacancies in the DPW and what we could do about maybe filling those gaps, we, what we did was, we, we went out and worked with Denise, our HR Director, and looked at some comparable communities and were able to adjust the salary range for a lot of these individuals. We presented that to the DPW Director, he then presented it to the union, and the union agreed that both with the board would sign an agreement to move these individuals up, mostly laborers in the union. So we've had the presented tonight, and just for the board's approval.
Okay, and as a result, we've already had two, two hires of this.
Was it one or two, Tim? One, we had two and I think one.
So we had, we interviewed, two candidates came in, we interviewed both. One is looking at kind of coming in possibly in September, which, which would be fine, you know.
Our way.
You know, so the other, the other, I think they're, they're going through the motions through all the screening and everything to get them working as soon as possible.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the, the agreement.
Motion to approve.
So because the board has taken action on this, is this just a public notification that we didn't?
Okay, so we have, okay, so we've already done it. Okay. All right.
Good clarification.
Sir Chairman. One thing on that last agenda item, because this is, the screening committee is going to be an official town committee, you may want to vote to establish it pending the charge.
Okay. No, I think let's, we'll, let's do the charge, we can do the charge and the committee at the same time. We're meeting in two weeks, we should have that taken care of in two weeks.
Sounds good.
It's not like we're going to get a whole bunch of candidates right now in two weeks, so, okay. All right. All right, next item on the agenda, we have an APRA update, funding allocation update. Gary and Tim.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the last meeting, we updated the board on some of the final projects that the DPW is looking at. We also looked at the other pool of money that we had, which was the federal money. This is the county money and Tim can brevis on the last couple of projects that we've submitted.
Sure, so the, from the county, the current balance is three hundred and ninety-two, just over three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars remaining. That includes the existing projects that haven't been approved yet, which is the 579 O Westport Road project for 2.5 million, and then the school HVAC project for six hundred and sixty-four thousand. We just had a water pollution control facility generator project. It was advertised, it came in about fifty-three thousand dollars under budget. So, so we'll, we have to refund that money back to the county. So that project should be awarded this week, and then we refund that money back to the county, so that'll bring that balance up to about four hundred and forty-five thousand.
What was that for, Tim?
That, that project was the upgrading generators at multiple pump station sites for our water pollution control. Yep.
It came, what was the price, the?
Fifty-three thousand dollars under budget. Well, that was, it was fifty-three under, it was about, it was about just under four hundred thousand.
Page ninety-nine in our packet has a breakdown.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
I got it right here.
So with the, with the balance that we have and, and, you know, there's always a possibility that the other projects may not get approved. So I've included about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of additional projects that I'm looking for the board to bless, that we can move forward so we don't have any, you know, any delays if we have to submit one of these projects immediately, we can, we can submit them. I have submitted a couple of the projects as they are part of existing projects, because the county doesn't like to approve any contingencies to a project, so we have, we have our belt filter press project at the water pollution control facility on the compost side that needed about an additional forty-eight thousand dollars worth of materials and labor. So we're in the process of submitting that project and, what's the other one? So we also have the biofilter blower project with, with three VFDs. We had approved two biofilter blowers, and now we're, we're looking at replacing the variable frequency drives with those, as well as a third blower. We have, we had another project that upgraded failed switchgear breaker component, and they had approved that, so we're, we're working on advertising a full upgrade of all of our switchgear components. It's a tough one because they don't make those breakers anymore, you know, they're over thirty years old, so, so it's kind of a custom, custom job, it's a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar project. We have a water pollution control grit screening rebuild, and anybody that, who took the tour of the facility, it's a facility that's up high, that all the, all the grit and, and materials get screened out of, out of the effluent as it comes into the plant. There's, there's two of them and we need to rebuild those, that's about another ninety-nine, ninety-nine thousand dollars per, per item. And then we have a couple smaller ones, we have a Fonce Corner Road insertion valve at the, at the, at the pump station that we, we have metered through purchasing water through the city of New Bedford. It's a fifty-five thousand dollar. Then we have a water pollution control odor, odor control pump motor, and for forty thousand dollars, and then the water division SCADA upgrade for two hundred thousand.
So, Neil.
So, Tim, are there any, are there any applications that you were concerned with that you'd like to have gotten done, but they've become too difficult to get the applications processed or approved or anything like that? I know that Dartmouth and North Attleboro have, have gotten an extension from, from the, from the county in their, I guess they're under some pressure too, because their, their window is starting to close also, right?
Yes, yes.
So what I, what I would hate to have is that we've had to bypass an important piece of what you think is integral to the extension of this sewer treatment plant because of the process. You know, do you, do you feel that we've gotten, you know, the best use of these funds for the projects that you really need done?
Yeah, I think so, you know, we're upgrading a lot of key components of the, of the plant that are old, that, that can be, that can be upgraded at this point. Without a full plant upgrade, you know, we, we've upgraded all of our UV, ultraviolet bulbs, you know, which was a, a huge cost to keep that because.
Still nobody making those bulbs, huh?
Other than Trojan, nope. They hold, they hold the, you know, the patent, so.
Unreal.
And then, you know, this, the, the belt filter presses that, you know, those are really in rough shape, so getting those upgraded, you know, it's, it's a great, you know.
So there was, I remember on the tour, there was one section where, I, I think it's when you, you talked about the building up top, right? The grinders, is that what those are?
The, the building up top, kind of in the middle of the facility, the smaller building, that's where all the grit screening is, that's so. So that's where all the effluent comes in, that's where it gets metered, and then.
And Mike was explaining that, some of, the design of that, the initial and the original design of that was kind of backwards a little bit. Are we, are we addressing that issue for you guys, so?
When we, when we work on the upgrade of the facility, we'll, we'll look at addressing that. Currently, we can't really move that out of the facility, you know, but, you know, it was, it was all based on location and function of everything else, rather than function of the plant back then, I think.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
My, my understanding, Tim, through our long-range planning, is that a lot of these improvements were designed to extend the existing system while we're evaluating what we're going to do going down the road.
Correct.
So not only have you done that, but you identified it, but we also got some of it paid for by the APRA funds.
Hundred percent, yes.
It's a great scenario.
Yes, absolutely.
And the idea is to keep us going, keep the capacity where it is while we're going to end up building something different.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
I have one question.
Mrs. Brooks.
The efficiency study that's happening at the DPW, when will that be completed?
They're trying to get that completed by the end of the year.
Year meaning December?
December, yeah. We're trying to get that done by, by the late fall somewhere, but we're looking probably by the end of the year.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Nice job, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have the former police station discussion. Gary, Chris.
This was a recommendation from a board member to put this on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, all right, because I'm seeing in our packet a bunch of information on housing converts, so I'm assuming, is that part of the discussion?
Yes, I forwarded this information from a session that I had attended. I had discussed it previously, and the folks list, who did the presentation and are listed here, have done other municipality conversions of town or city properties. I think it would behoove us to inquire, they made it very clear during their presentations that they can look at a property, see, they are primarily looking at converting these properties into housing, and they would look at the property and see if it will convert to an appropriate number of units where it would be fiscally responsible to do the conversion. And they would look at it, and if it is something that they feel we won't get enough units to make this a possibility, they will inform us of that.
Okay, so how many different firms do you have in here?
There were three firms that presented.
Okay.
Coalition for a Better Acre, Capstone Communities and Causeway Development.
Okay, all right, so the question would be, is how do we go about getting something from them and how does it fit under 30B?
I'd like to interject something first beforehand, if I may.
Okay, Mrs. Tattelbaum.
My concern firstly, and this, I think your approach is excellent, Heidi, and I think we should definitely consider it, but my concern now is that we need to deal with the EPA, their schedule, will it encumber us in terms of what it may or may not take in terms of time and issue? And I don't know how we, we should approach that first, but I think that we need to address that in some form, to give us some kind of timeframe as to where we stand. And they may, maybe they'll give us something concrete, or maybe they can give us an estimate, but I think it's important to know where we stand on the entire property regarding that before we can then move on. Or maybe we can do it simultaneously, I don't know the answer, but I think that that's important.
I think we, I think we did have a, an agreement with them to extend their use, and I think it runs, was it a year?
Yeah.
From the, from the renewal? Do you remember? And they had an option to.
I, I don't have the dates in front of me, but I do know they have another cluster of properties that they did want to target, so that will inevitably.
Right, and they left an open, open door to the.
They may get even more, right?
But, but as far as, as far as trying to find a use for the building, that can run simultaneously with the EPA.
I mean, so, I'm not saying no, but I think we need to.
But if it gets to the point where, if it gets to the point where the use of the building is going to not be compatible with what the EPA is using in the parking lot, then that's a decision that we can make down the line. But right now, we can, we can, we can try and determine to trying the best use of the building, and we can contact, we should be able to contact these three companies through a process and just asking them to give us some type of, some type of a proposal.
I think once they look at the square footage and the location, and then they can figure out, bottom line is, we need to know, would it be fiscally responsible for us to move in that direction or not? I think these companies would look at it and say, yes, because now we're, if the conversion were to happen, you'd get these units back into, you know, into the, you know.
And I think they can be made aware.
And it's going to take time.
Yeah, and I think they can be made aware of what's going on with the EPA too, so at the same time. Mr. Mickelson? Yeah, so they also need to know that the building had issues with Legionnaires' disease. That would be.
Yeah.
And I wonder, with all these samples of all these beautiful redevelopment apartments and schools and things of that sort, how many of these buildings, or if any of these buildings, had to deal with Legionnaires' disease? Well, I'm not sure about that, but I know, I'm almost positive some of these buildings were in pretty bad shape before they looked at them.
They did mention that.
So, yeah.
Yeah, they had some.
I understand they were in bad shape, but.
They had some pictures, they dealt with lead paint.
We need to know, we, our building, in my opinion, is a sick building still, so. Well, it all depends upon, I mean, if it's Legionnaires', then it's in the plumbing and all the plumbing would be torn out anyway, so. That can be. We shall see. That can be, right, I mean, if it can be, it can be fixed, repaired, to make it healthy again, then I think we have, we should, we have the responsibility to take a look at what we can do and if we can provide some kind of affordable housing for those that need, then let's do it. We shall see. So let's take a look at it, so let's contact, heck, contact all three of them. If they're interested, they'll, they'll submit something, they'll let us know. But let them know about previous problems with the building and what's going on with the EPA as part of that, so that they're made fully aware and they know what's going on.
I know that it may be prodding a bear in terms of communicating with the EPA, but I think it would be useful in some form to get some kind of a stance as to where we are with it.
Let's take a look at what we have for the, for the agreement first, before we do any contacting with them.
What agreement?
With the EPA. With the EPA, we have, we have a current agreement with them.
Right.
Right, so let's take a look at it first, so before we decide.
And then we can, when we know that, we can meet again, another meeting.
Right.
Great.
Thank you. This should be ongoing. Right.
But one of these plants had some serious issues with it.
Serious. It wasn't Legionnaires' disease.
All right.
That's all I get. All right, let's just backtrack real quick to the APRA funding. What we need is, we need a vote from the board to approve the, the funding list that's submitted by Mr. Baba going forward. So, so moved. Is there a second?
I can.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none unanimous. You got it. All right. Get that money. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the Select Board Access to the Online Permitting System Discussion. So, Mr. O'Neil, I believe you are the one who requested this.
Yes, let me see, so. The portal, my first experience with the portal was through the, the Planning Board and through an application that I personally had submitted online. I guess there are, there are different ways to see the information that is contained on the portal for the applications, permits and things that are posted on there. It allows each town department that is relative to the application to make comments and to either approve, disapprove and, and put notes on the system. Some of the issues that I have now, I'm, I'm receiving more and more constituent service requests from Mike Montigny's office, and it's becoming difficult to, to maintain some of the easier things without interrupting department heads. I think that as the Select Board members, if we had access to the information on the town side of those applications, then that would be very helpful in turning the constituent service requests around more, more quickly and more efficiently. The ability to answer just even the, the most basic of questions. I understand there's some resonance about, you know, the, the releasing certain information that are in there, in, in particular comments and notes and things like that, or even commenting on any applications as a Select Board member. My only suggestion to the board would be, if we do gain access to the portal, that we would be under the, the understanding that there would be no notes or comments allowed. we would be under the understanding that there would be no notes or comments allowed by the Select Board members because of the chance of violating the open meeting law. So, and we know we want to avoid that at all costs. One of the other things that really kind of keep, I keep driving Chris nuts about this, is my, you know, representing the Select Board to the Planning Board and looking at the applications, if we're gonna have some type of representation from each member on certain boards in town, it would be very helpful to have access to the portal also. As long as we're not, you know, again, commenting, putting notes on there, using it as basically a reference tool for the applications that have been presented. I've got, I think I've got four or five constituent requests right now going around. I had one that we sent over, that I sent over to the Building Department, and I'm just running blind. I'm not sure exactly what's going on with the complaint itself, and I'd hate, as these requests, and I'm sure you get them also, you know, it's just the nature of this type of position, I'd hate to have to go to department heads on each and every one of these requests. They bogged down quite a bit enough. So I'll open it for discussion. Obviously, Mr. Chairman, you'll keep it open for discussion, but I'd like to come back and make a motion with, after hearing the concern.
At this time, I, generally if somebody from, from the public has an issue and they contact me, I try to point them in the right direction as to where to go for the information and who to talk to regarding, you know, whatever's going on. And there has been times when it has to do with applications and some of the permits that they've requested. But I also tell them that if they don't get a response from them by a certain time to get ahold of me, and that I will contact, you know, the department head or the person involved in that to make sure that they respond. One of the things that I'm a little concerned about with us having the access is there's a lot of personal information in there from the people, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, you know, it could happen, but there is the possibility of some of that personal information getting out there. And the problem is this also that I see. People think that this board has the power to do a lot of things in town, and we don't. We have, we're basically, we're a policymaking board. We try to guide the town in how our individual ideas mesh with the town and go, but as far as the ability to tell people what to do, it's very limited. And I see where this could possibly go wrong or go sideways, real quick, with anyone. And I'm not saying you in particular, Mr. O'Neill, I'd say, down the line, maybe, you know, five years from now, if everybody still has, you know, if there's the access, who knows what could happen. I just, I just think that the best way to handle these type of requests would be for us to send an email to respond to the person that this is who they need to talk to, and that if they don't get an answer, to get back to us right away, and that we will contact the department head in consideration. I can give you a case in point. Case in point, we have a neighborhood situation where there is a renter, and the renter is dealing with automobiles and creating all sorts of noise. Person reached out to me, I told them who to contact, and then I followed up myself. And right now, that's, that's still a situation that's being worked on and being dealt with. But it's being dealt with, bringing it to the awareness of the people who work in this town, I think is very important. I don't, getting into the permitting process and getting into somebody's permits, I think is just a little bit much. The board gave me access to do common VIC permits and one-day licenses, and I do look at what the situation is, and I do look at what, you know, what the sound of the town department heads, just to make sure that everybody, because by the time it gets to me, all I need to do is just click on a, click on a dot just to say it's complete. But I think, I think what you're looking for is a little bit different than that, and there is some concerns and discussion with Anthony, with Town Council, that there could be problematic with, especially with open meeting violations, and I want to totally avoid all that. I understand what you're looking to do, and I think every one of us here who have been here understand the frustration in not getting something done right away. And, I mean, the situation that I refer to, you know, is, right now is three years in the making, you know. I'm just not sure, individually, I myself would not want to have that type of access. That's me. I can't speak on behalf of everybody else. Mrs. Brooks?
I just wanted to say that I think Mr. O'Neill makes a good point, going back to, we have talked about having members of this board liaison to other boards or departments, you know, so that we can bring information back to this board on how things are moving. And so I think I'm looking at that lens. If we do as we say and liaison ourselves to a board or a department, then we, in that capacity, should have access to what would be beneficial to assist in that role. And so, in this case, I would say that if we go forth and Mr. O'Neill would be fulfilling that capacity, I could see that this would be important in that capacity for him. And at the same time, I would say that as a general rule, it may not be for all of us to have access. I don't see myself as not fulfilling that role of needing that level of access. I think that I would be able to say to someone who contacted me, you know, who to contact at a board or department level, but I also think it's helpful to say, if your situation is not resolved or you continue to have questions, the liaison to that department on our board is X, and feel free to contact that person. So I think it's another level of assistance. But I understand your concern for voyeurism, and I agree with that, and to be perfectly honest, I would have no, not fulfilling that role, I feel I have no reason to be, to have access to that.
Because at this time, the permitting system does not allow for selective viewing. You look at, if you get access to the permitting system, you look at everything. You look at every single building permit, you look at every electrical permit, you look at every gas, plumbing, you look at every application before the board, you can look at every license, you can look at everything that goes on in that permitting system. There's no selective, so maybe at some point in time, you know, when the software is able to do that.
Actually, actually, there is, because I have, I have access personally because of an application that I processed. So I can see certain things on my particular application, but the Planning Board on their side actually has copies of the plans on their side for the other applications that I wouldn't be privy to. So, you know, I get a call on an application that's been, that's been around, different boards, and in particular, my concern as a Planning Board, is to be able to go back, because now that I'm on the Select Board, I lost access to the Planning Board plans. So if you have access to the online portal from the town side, from the employee side, you can review and take a look at the plans and try and figure out what the issue is and where the bottlenecks are, so you can contact the right person.
Right, I can, yeah, I can understand it, but one of the things I also want to be careful of is, and I don't want to have this sounding the wrong way, but I know the way it's gonna come out, it's gonna sound out, it's gonna come out bad, but I don't want any member of this board being used by a member of the public to serve their own by going into the permitting process and getting information. I don't want that to happen, because what'll end up happening is that person who requested the information is not gonna get the wrath of the board. It's the person who actually devotes that information, and I don't want to see that happening to anybody.
Yeah, if it's used properly, listen, we're the highest elected officials in the town.
Right.
You have to understand that this information, that you're privy to information that others may not be privy to. If you're using it in a way to help guide policy in the town, you can't see the process unless you see the process. You don't know what the process is until you see the process. So you can't guide policy if you don't know exactly where the bottlenecks are and how things are falling, falling down in certain areas. If you wanted to consider a test period, but honestly, liaison of the Planning Board would be, I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do it if I didn't have access to this, because I would absolutely drive, I would drive them crazy. So.
But I'll be honest with you, that's what they're there for.
Yeah, but you know what, and this is why we got such a bad rap over the last couple of years on customer service. I mean, what are we doing? You know, we're trying to make the process better, not worse, and we're not trying to use the information for some nefarious reason. I mean, at least I wouldn't be. I mean, it's, if you're setting up liaisons and you want to make sure the information is correct that you're even making policy on, then I just think it's, it's all public information, right? It can be FOIA'd, am I right?
It can be redacted, yes.
Yeah, right. So, so it's public information. We are the highest elected board. It would help, I think, and if it doesn't help, then we wouldn't use it. So, that.
Mr. Mickelson?
I think it's a little overreached. I think we caught blanch to look at all of this information, could be, not in your particular case, but by someone down the line, could be, could be used in not a professional way. And I think what, the way it's working right now, I don't think we should, if it works, we should leave it alone for now. I just think it's, we'll get some pushback from.
But it doesn't work.
From residents.
Yeah.
That will want to, will think that, you know, we're overreaching our position. I know we're the highest position in town, however, as the chairman mentioned, not that high. We don't have that many, that luxury, so I particularly don't think it's a good idea.
Jim?
Mr. Telleba.
I'm gonna give it a different perspective. This board is privy to extremely private and sensitive information, and it's our obligation to keep it that way. We're talking about information that Mr. O'Neill would have that's public already. I'm coming from a different perspective, and I said this to the Planning Board when they were here. We have an opportunity now with a new director coming in and a member on our board who was a former active member of planning. If he's gonna use this to help and do the work of the Planning Board on an individual basis, I don't think that's what Mr. O'Neill has in mind. I would like to feel that down the road, our Planning Board can not only do the day-to-day work of individual projects, but look at what is most important from a high bird's eye view of town, meaning the master plan, what's important and priorities in town. And if that is a tool that Mr. O'Neill can use to help us, bring back to us to say, this is what's really important we need to change, and set priorities, and I'm all in favor, because I think now's the opportunity to strike with the Planning Board with a new member, a new director, and a new TA coming in, that we can really do something different. Because let's face it, planning and a master plan is everything about where this town's going in terms of future, and I think we need to look at that on a, on a much bigger basis. And if he thinks the tools that he needs are there, then I'm all in favor of doing it, and we do it on a test basis, and maybe we come back in the spring or January and say, how's it going? But I think that we have an opportunity that we should take advantage of.
Well, I don't think, I don't think Mr. O'Neill's looking for policy stuff. He's looking for individual permitting stuff. You know, when somebody calls and, when somebody calls him or somebody calls Montigny's office and they in turn call him and say, what's going on with this? He's looking, he wants to go into that, he wants to go into the permitting process and find out what's going on. So that's not policy. That's each individual application. So, and that's, you know, what you're talking about is something entirely different.
I agree.
Than what, what Mr. O'Neill's looking for, and it's something that can be discussed.
I'm actually looking at both, Sean. I'm looking at both. I'm looking at trying to, trying to guide policy for the board going forward with whatever you can glean from the system and how it's set up now, for sure. I mean, you would obviously want to make things better, not worse, you know, less sticky if possible, and that's strictly on a, on a policy basis. That comes back to this board for recommendations to either the Building Department or the Planning Department, or, you know, these are the things that you notice when you're looking at the approvals and declinations and the checkoffs from each department head and things like that. I think that goes to the policy. And then on the individual cases, yeah, I'm sure there'll be specific cases where basic answers can be seen on the portal where I wouldn't have to contact a department head in order to get those questions answered. I just think it would streamline the process a little bit better. I mean, listen, you've got to use your head, you know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna use the information in a detrimental way to the town. That's not your position, that's not what you're there for, you know.
Well, I think if, if we're gonna go that route, then I, we have to have an in-house policy for us, for our board as to what information we can and cannot use, or, you know, or what we can and can look at, and what can and can be done about it, so.
In this particular case, if it's possible that only Mr. O'Neill can be privy to that part of information, and that would be great, and I'd be in favor if that's the case.
And I contest that, Mr. Chairman, for a certain, for a narrow window, if you like, because I believe in it, I think we can use it to try and help the town, help the citizens, try and make the process better, and if that works, then great. If it doesn't, I'd come back to you and say, shut it down, I don't need it.
Well, I'd like to, all right, I, but I would like to have at least the parameters set up beforehand, just to make sure that people are aware as to what can be done. So I'm gonna charge our two co-town administrators to come up with something for us.
Well, Mrs. Brooks' point, if we're gonna establish the four or five key committees in town where a liaison, we're gonna be representing, this is just one of maybe four or five that really could mean something, and I think the rules should be established, and I think they'd be pretty similar to each one's job. You're privy to very private information, you're not here to do the other committees' work.
The other thing, too, is, I don't mind, you know, setting up liaisons are fine, but liaisons basically is just a listening board, and not to, not to interject, you know, not to interject your personal or the board's personal into the operations of that department. You're there to listen to the department and what to do to help them, to assist them, not tell them what to do.
That's part of the charge.
That's, that's right, and that, I want to make sure that's all set up so there's a clear understanding, because, you know, I'll be honest with you, you know, when you, when you go into somebody's backyard that you're, you know, that's never had anybody in there before, they get defensive, you know.
Well, our job, we are limited in policy issues with these committees. I've always felt our job is to show some leadership, to get in the room, to listen, and then come back and try to have some guidance as to what the big picture is. And how do you do that without listening? And you don't have the power to go in and say, you can't do that. First of all, you don't represent the Select Board, you're there as a, you have to go back to the Select Board and report, so that, and that's the policy you're talking about.
But if we have the policy set beforehand, everybody's gonna know where, how, and where we're coming from.
Yep, pretty cut and dry, and it's, it doesn't have to be a 10-page document.
And that's a.
I like it as parameters.
Yeah, it's probably the same parameters that the employees have, right? So, I mean, you've got an assistant town planner. When you look at that screen on a particular project, you've got access to the plans that have been submitted, updated, and you kind of get an idea of what the process is and where it is in the process, and if it's working for all the departments, if it's not working for the. And if it's working for all the departments, if it's not working for the departments, that's when I think it comes back to a process issue and you can come back and say...
All right, so I think at this point in time, let's see what the parameters are, what they come up with, and we can discuss this at a further time.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, it might help us to, you know, ViewCommit and Open Gov is a, is a large platform amongst multiple communities, amongst multiple states. There must be some kind of guidance that they could probably give us, or some other communities that are...
The town of Amherst has 13 members on their board, and they all are gigantic liaisons, and they have a rule right, this is not reinventing the wheel.
Right, instead of recreating the wheel, maybe we can get a policy from another community that shows that.
Short and sweet, absolutely.
So I'll work on that with Chris.
I just, one comment on that as well, is so, we'll certainly go back and we'll look at that draft policy, what functionality the system has and what we can do, obviously, to accommodate the board. The last, I think, comment I'll just make is that when it comes to operational efficiencies in the day-to-day operation of the town, Gary, myself, and our staff, we're always looking for ways for operational efficiency, and that, and that's what you charge us to do, is to manage the day-to-day operations. So, you know, any concern, problem that the board at any point in time brings to our attention, we are working with departments to, you know, remove log jams and help our constituents, so, and we'll continue to do that.
All right, good. All right, so to be continued. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the interim town administrator update, which we really don't need to do because we already took care of that. Old business, anything under...
Do they have anything to fill us in?
You're, I'm sorry. Go ahead, your update. Sorry, my apologies.
So both Chris and I held our second department head meeting, preliminary discussion on the fall town meeting, and advised departments to start submitting any warrant articles that they may need. I held the first CIPC meeting, discussed the strategy for the fall town meeting, capital articles, and an updated grading criteria that we want to use this year, going from one to 10 priority to a ranking of four, and whether something is, you know, critical, life safety, a concern, the departments will receive the CIPC memo on 8/19 for the fall town meeting. Both Chris and I were starting the preliminary discussions for the FY '26 budget. We both agree that, I, it's crazy, we just finished the FY '25 budget, but we both agree that the process should start sooner than later, and right after the fall town meeting, I'll start organizing that with the finance committee, start that process with them. The building department has three new members, we're excited to have them on board. Andrew Gomes is a part-time electrical inspector, John Berenati, a part-time building inspector, and Jimmy Pappas as our full-time building inspector.
Really?
Jimmy boy.
Cultural Council had their monthly building committee meeting, and the final design should be complete for review by the select board in early October.
People are going to, people are, people are going to be very impressed with our, our building department. We doing Randy, Jimmy now? Yeah, looking forward to that.
We'll be fine.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Chris, you have anything to add, or Gary took care of it?
He took care of it.
All right. Just as an FYI to the community, Gary's over on to my right, so the next meeting, Chris will be over here, so everybody has an equal shot at the, at the big chair. All right, old business, do we have anything on the bliss corner?
No new business.
Lake Nookajoke?
No new business.
Municipal broadband, other than looking for people.
Well, the broadband committee had met, and they have, are going to have a draft proposal to present to the board in September.
And Mast EP Title V. Okay. Minutes, we have the minutes of July 1st, July 8th, and July 22nd. Any questions on the minutes?
Motion to approve all three.
Motion made by Mr. Tattelbaum and seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? Favorit say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, non-unanimous. Select board updates, anybody have any? Mr. Tattelbaum, you have anything?
I have talked enough tonight.
Mr. Mickelson, you have anything?
Well, I have it's under information, but I don't, I'll let, I'll wait, see if anybody has any...
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So, last Tuesday, I had the privilege of, my TV program for DCTV called Your Town, I'm sure everyone's watched it over the years.
All the time.
All the time, and on and on and on. I had District Attorney Quinn, Police Chief Leveque, and we talked in length about elderly abuse. And it's, it is ongoing, it's, it's, it's out of control in a lot of areas. If you'd like, go onto DC, DCTV, under Your Town, and you'll see the program, and it's very, very informative.
All right.
Good job.
Mrs. Brooks, you have anything?
Um, no, because I spoke on the election when Sarah was speaking.
Addiction...
Yes, I too, thank you. Yes, on August 20, it's Thursday, August 29th, Dartmouth will host our now annual International Overdose Awareness Night. We're going to hold it actually right out front in front of the town hall that evening. We have a couple of speakers who have been touched by addiction and particular overdoses. We have a sibling of, an overdose victim, well, actually two. We have the, we have Joanne Peterson, who started 20 years ago, Learn to Cope, she will also be here. We have a vendor, we have a food vendor that's going to be on site, we have some activities for folks to share about their loved one. We'll be taking a walk through tomorrow of the program, and it'll be a nice evening of reflection and remembrance. That will happen again Thursday, August 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 in front of the town hall.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Let me quickly look, nope. Just a reminder that the Dartmouth Community Band is still performing Tuesday nights at the gazebo at Pontigan Set Beach, and on Wednesday nights, it's the, a different band every week, and on both evenings, the bucket is open with a special, a special concert menu.
Mr. O'Neill, you have anything? One quick one, Mr. Chairman. The Representative Markey and I have been back and forth on an issue that I'm sure you're aware of, the stat ambulance relocation due to the station renovation. They're struggling to find space. We need some overnight access in a garage if possible, we're going into the winter. Chris and I have been back and forth on a couple of options, but I didn't know if we had any updates from Russell's Mills or... Has District Two been contacted? I believe so. I'm not sure, I can, I can double check. It'll be interesting to find out what their response is.
Broken down building on, on Bridge Street, let them go in there.
That can't fit a bus. That can't fit a bus.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, yes.
One quick thing I, I just want to mention, and Mrs. Brooks and I had the privilege of spending four or five sessions with the school department regarding their long-range strategic planning, and it was really quite eventful, and they're going to do a great job, and the, the plan will be produced, and they take it very seriously, and I think you'll see a lot of continued improvements of the school.
Great. All right, the only thing I have is, today was the debut of, what is it called, Peter?
What's Cooking in Dartmouth.
What's Cooking in Dartmouth. It's a cooking program where a town employee is highlighted to show off their culinary skills, but also to discuss what they do. And the first item, the first person on it is Chad from our information, and he cooks some smash burgers, even though the first burger was not really in great shape, but the second one was actually better than the first one.
It's all right, it's a learning curve.
They call them smash burgers, they all beat up anyway, right?
No, 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 because instead of having the puffy burger, you really, you smash it down into the grill so that it develops a crust. Come on, David, get with it.
I'm a vegetarian.
Oh, well, then, that's your problem. Right, it could be, it could be a bean burger. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Please do, yeah.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Tattelbaum on the motion. All those in favor say aye, opposed, non-unanimous. Good night, everybody.